More call to order this April 16, 2020, for the supervisors workshop. Tonight, we're doing remote broadcasting once again. To my right onstage is Mr. Mike Bailey, Supervisor District Three. To my left is Mrs. Karen Carmack, Supervisor District Five. We also have Mr. Larry Norvik, who's coming in from home. He's the Supervisor of District Two. We have Brett Shardine, our Acting County Administrator, and Charlotte Schubert, our Finance Director. Later, we'll have others join us for the meeting. Mr. Cox from District Four hasn't arrived yet, but as soon as he gets there, we'll bring him on board. So we'll have an opportunity tonight for public comment for people that want to come in and speak to us remotely. Brett, will you explain to us briefly how that's going to work tonight?
Yeah, Will, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, so we have a couple of options for people that want to participate. They can view the meeting either through the Zoom on their computer or smartphone. They can also, we have some numbers they can dial in if they just want to listen in to the audio. And then, of course, it's streaming as it usually is live on YouTube. And then, if anybody actually wants to participate during the public comment periods with Zoom, they can either raise their hand clicking that icon, or if they're on the phone, hit star nine when that time comes. So when we get to public comment, we'll again walk everybody through that. But those are the options we have available this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Shardine. At this time, Mrs. Carmack, will you lead us in a pledge of allegiance? And Mr. Norvik, will you do the invocation?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
He's on mute.
We thank you for the privilege of being able to tap into your wisdom and translate that into everyday practical usage. And we just pray tonight that we can be faithful to your wisdom and do the public good in a way that's pleasing to you. In your name, amen.
Mrs. Carmack, gentlemen, do I have any changes to postpone agenda items, additions, deletions, or changes to the order presentation tonight?
No.
Do I have a motion for formal approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Any comments on a motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Tonight, we're going to have a presentation. Brett, I believe this is going to be by Mr. Nellis, is it not?
Yeah, Mr. Kurt Nellis, he has a brief presentation. He'll update us on coronavirus response, kind of from the Emergency Operations Center perspective. And then, I have a presentation I'll go through to just talk about some other things that have taken place since the last time we all met together.
Okay, has Kurt joined us?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Mr. Nellis, welcome.
Yes, sir. Thank you. What I'd like to do for the board, if that's possible, is show you some information from our last update of our COVID response. I do have some slides, and let me know if you... I wanted to first provide you with some data, information that you probably see all the time in, on the different areas where you can get information. But I think what was specific about this particular slide is the difference between the last briefing that I gave you on March 30th and today, which was only 16 days ago. And you'll see that the United States cases have gone a 77% increase in these 16 days. The same with Virginia, 85% increase. And in Powhatan, we currently have five cases in Powhatan. Deaths in the United States, a 90% increase in these 16 days since our last briefing, and then 88% increase in deaths in Virginia. No deaths have been reported in Powhatan. Another, the next slide here is the critical lifelines. If you recall, I described that these are the seven critical lifelines that I use to evaluate my response in the areas that we work within. And the March 30th briefing, we had two in red. And today, today's briefing, food and water is now yellow. And that's basically because the distribution chain has improved and the capabilities of providing supplies have improved. Even though that you still will probably experience some shortages, it's nothing like it was before. And the reason that it was red before was is there really wasn't a plan in place by the private sector who handled the food distribution, the food chain, to deal with those shortages. But now they do have a plan in place, and that's what the yellow indicates, is that there's still an impact, but at least they have a plan in place to deal with that. I wanted to share with you again the leader's intent, which is the information that really that you, I guess, your instructions to emergency management in the county on what it is that you'd like to see done during this event. And there's one element that I have added to the bottom of this. It's highlighted in red, and I've added, and I'm looking to see if you approve of this particular element. And this goal would be to facilitate the recovery process utilizing a whole community approach. So, Mr. Chairman, with that, I would ask if you concur with me adding that goal to this, to my instructions.
I would ask the board, do we have consensus with adding this to the intent goals? Mr. Norvik?
Can you hear me okay, Mr. Chairman?
We're having trouble, Mr. Norvik, hearing you.
How's that? Is that better?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you can see I'm on my phone. Can you just describe, Kurt, and thank you for the presentation, can you just describe what the whole community approach is so that people understand it that are listening to this?
Basically, the whole community approach is a direction or a kind of a viewpoint of bringing in everybody who has probably a seat at the table, who have either needs or have things that they can provide. It's an embracing of the complete community in the recovery process, not just something that the county is addressing or that we feel from a county perspective, or that it's a public safety recovery or anything like that. It's the process of bringing the entire community together to understand what their challenges, unmet needs are, and working together as a, just like it indicates, whole community to come up with a strategy and a way to effectively recover from the incident.
So if I'm a citizen in District Two, how, you know, do I get involved in that? Who do I contact? Or is this going to be done through, you know, groups like the Coalition of Churches? Or what does that look like to the citizen that wants to help out?
Well, I think when we get to that point, this being just this particular goal, what that tells me is that if you're interested in doing this as a goal, then I would create a system or a process by which people will get involved in it. I have an idea of how I want to approach that, but that certainly has to be vetted out through the different channels and to make sure that I am accomplishing it properly. So at this moment, if someone asks you, how do I get involved? Wait, there's something down the road, you'll be hearing from us. It may be helping out another organization or volunteering or something like that. If we put together any task forces or groups or entities to deal with the situation in a recovery fashion, they'll be notified and how they can get involved and be a part of it. But right now, I couldn't say, yeah, come join me, I have this group organized. I don't have that yet. I wanted to make sure that you were okay with the concept before I start developing the actual vehicle in which we would accomplish that goal.
Yeah, no, thank you for that good answer, and I'm certainly in favor of it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Norvik.
Would you like me to continue?
Please, I think you have your marching orders.
Okay, thank you, sir. Just some activities and response things since our last briefing. Didn't want to go over all the myriad of details. I think all the members of the board are getting my situation reports and the reports from the community lifeline. So you're seeing the gory details as I go along each time I send them out. But just to give you a quick briefing of what's happened since then, the Virtual Emergency Operations Center still remains active with a planning cell. We are conducting weekly conference calls with key departments. That's occurring on a Tuesday morning, and we'll continue to do that until such time as we feel like we don't need to do that. It's an excellent opportunity for the departments to facilitate and collaborate together in problem solving and hear what the other people are challenged with and what they need to work on together. Most of the county offices are still closed or on some type of modified schedule. We're conducting deep cleaning in areas where employees have been since the last time the cleaning occurs in those areas. With offices being closed, we don't have to clean them as often or even since the last time. So Public Works is dealing with cleaning areas where employees have been. Schools are still continuing to conduct weekly food distribution. They've provided us with some awesome donations of materials, some cleaning supplies that they had, that they donated to the county and added to the pile. And they continue to support county operations in any way that we've asked. It's just, it's just really, really nice the way we're all just getting along and collaborating together in an awesome fashion. Public safety providers are experiencing normal call levels. And I think if you talk to the sheriff or the fire chief, you'll say that it just seems like things are not necessarily quiet, but it's not extraordinarily busy for them. One of our, the next slide here outlines some of the outstanding issues and challenges that we are facing from an emergency management perspective. Right now, the hot button item is personal protective equipment or PPE. It still continues to be a challenge of obtaining PPE. But we've been doing some creative management processes and stuff, and we're able to stay ahead of the curve with this. So in other words, our supply is adequate for what we have going on. As long as we maintain this certain level, I think we're going to be okay with that. Access to this next challenge is probably the biggest thing that I've been working on here of late is access to what I would consider effective and timely and quick essential employee antibody and exposure testing is still a challenge. And I think this will continue to be a challenge into the future as those antibody tests being released from the FDA. So finding places where we can get those done and get the results enough in a quick fashion is a challenge. We'll continue to try to work on that challenge. And then the last one, and I think even now, as we speak, the President is on the television discussing opening the country. And that's the reason that I had this last bullet here, is that we don't give in to public pressure to resume government operations until we get appropriate guidance from the Virginia Department of Health. And that's going to be, that's going to be one of our challenges that we'll have to work through. Some priorities and actions that we anticipate. We're going to still continue to provide a consistent, high-quality of public safety services. The Fire Department, EMS, volunteers, career people, the Sheriff's Department, everybody has done a yeoman's job in maintaining service levels high. These people are out there risking their personal lives and health by providing the quality service that they do, and they're doing it willingly. We're going to continue to conduct some advanced recovery planning. And I say advanced, we're starting to talk about, with people, about recovery concepts and things that we're going to need to do down the road. What do we see months or so down the road that we're going to have to deal with so that we can be ahead of the power curve and we're not playing catch-up on some of those things? We've already started capturing costs of what we're doing so that we can participate in the FEMA Public Assistance Program. That is a reimbursement program. And my opinion is we go after every penny that we can get if they're eligible reimbursement costs. We continue to provide support to departments and agencies who are providing services to seniors and other citizens that might need help. Mostly, that's in the social services arena and in the school system. We're going to continue to try to support anything that we can to help those out there who can't help themselves and get the things that they need. We're going to continue to provide support and recommendations and counsel to our Powhatan businesses and doing that through the Economic Development Department and trying to help our businesses work through this myriad of things that they have to work. And then, the last action and priority would be to continue to manage the message to make sure that that message is consistent and agreed upon by all the stakeholders within the organization so that they hear one consistent unified message about what we're doing, what our priorities are, how we're going to approach this and all. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll open up for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Nellis. Any questions for Kurt? Larry, you have any questions?
No, I just want to remark one more time. Kurt, what a great job you're doing, and a lot of people are noticing. And you and the team, basically, we owe you a lot, and I just want to say thank you.
Well said.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Kurt.
You're welcome.
Okay, at this time, we'll have our first public comment period. Excuse me?
Mr. Chairman, I've got some slides to go through before that, if that's okay.
Please, please, Mr. Shardine.
Okay, I'm going to try and share my screen here. And if that doesn't work, then I'll get John to help me out. Okay, can you see the PowerPoint up on your screen?
Yes.
Okay. So Kurt talked about the total number of cases being five in Powhatan right now. Also, looking at this on a per capita basis, Powhatan is fairly low compared to the rest of the state. So you can see we're right there in the central Virginia, center of the state, where that kind of hole in the middle, because our per capita rate of infection is significantly lower. Hard to say exactly why that is, you know, one, certainly, we're more rural. We have a less dense population pattern. Some of it could be the lack of a hospital or certain medical facilities in the county, so fewer people may be getting tested. Also, I'd like to think that it's due to some of the efforts our citizens are taking and sacrifices they're making to limit their own exposure and exposure to the public, as well as the work of Kurt and other people on our team and staff. So, you know, we'll keep looking at those numbers and watching them. But certainly, right now, better to be in that lighter shade than one of the darker ones, which would indicate a higher rate of infection. But with that being said, we do need to continue to be cautious and take all the necessary steps to make sure we keep it that way. This was a report, came out this week. Louisiana County, Iowa, kind of a cautionary tale of another rural area. I think their population about 11,000, so significantly smaller than us. You can see when you do have a small population, how quickly your per capita rate can change. So if we had five more cases, well, that amounts to 100% increase. You can see there, not total cases, but just per capita, how they were kind of around where we were. It had some outbreaks and spread, and then very quickly rose up to match New York City on a per capita basis. So again, we don't want to get too comfortable. It is good that we're currently seem to have less than other areas, but we want to continue to be cautious and make sure we keep it that way. So that would, of course, the things we've been talking about every single, every single day, every single week, washing your hands, good hygiene, social distancing, the Newark guidance to wear masks in public and limiting nonessential trips. Looking at some of the different models, which they change daily, forecasting when Virginia may hit our peak. So this is one model a lot of people are looking at, which would have it around the end of this month and then tapering off starting in May. And then, UVA recently, they released some models that they've done, showing different scenarios between doing nothing to relaxing some of our guidelines in April, showing what would happen if we relaxed them, June 10th is planned, and then also showing some scenarios if we were to stay the course as far as completely being under this shutdown, opening that either April 30th or June 10th, and how that extends the curve certainly out later, but lowers the resource demand. So that model's pushing out significantly further than some of the other ones. So we're looking at all these different ones and gaining knowledge from each of them. VDH, they put out a coronavirus hotline. So one thing we're trying to do is encourage people to not call 911 unless it is an emergency. If it's more of a general question about coronavirus, then this is a great hotline to use. If it's a more general question about county services or something, then, you know, call one of our main county lines. And this is just another version of that same pamphlet, but more Powhatan-centric. Working on some updates to our website. So we have a general refresh to the whole look and flow of our website planned for end of this month. We're trying to push that up a little bit just so we can add some new information, make the website a little more intuitive and easier to use. So we're trying to get that going here shortly. Carla, she put together a good FAQ document, we'll be adding that. And then, when to put out, the library, they've done a lot of work and putting together a great resources page that covers the whole spectrum of available resources and knowledge for the community. And they specifically put together this pamphlet on resources for our senior population. So again, you can pull that from our website or from the library's website. Talking about our departments, as Kurt said, we continue to operate well under our open with reduced operations. So generally, that means that buildings are closed to general foot traffic. But if somebody needs to come in, we're certainly going to accommodate them with advice calling, emailing ahead. About 35% of our workforce is doing so remotely, either full-time or part-time. And then, of our total part-time staff, about 89% are still working. Most of those are in Public Works and Public Safety. And then, about 11% of our part-time workforce is not working, either because their duties are on hold or their vacant part-time positions that we're not filling at this time. Then, looking at economic development, which is certainly one of the most important areas that's been hit, our local national economy, and what we do to come out of that. So Camara Analytics, they did an analysis of what they call the Economic Vulnerability Index. So how likely it is that local economies will be harmed or what degree it'll be harmed by this. So it can't see really Powhatan on there too well, but the average is a 100. So Powhatan being a 92, they're rating us slightly below average, in a good way. You would want to be below average in here. So they're predicting, based on our economy, the types of businesses, the types of revenue, our proximity to markets, all of that, that we'll see a slightly less than average hit to our economy, which is kind of what we've been talking about and expecting based on Powhatan's economy. The unemployment numbers, so those came out for Powhatan today, they're released on Thursdays. So you can see back March 14th, there were four new claims, typical. Then, March 21st is when really the signs of the pandemic hit the labor market. So 133 people quickly jumped up to 290, then 390. And then, today's went down a little bit. So there are still, this is new claims, not sustained ongoing claims. So we'll continue to watch that, but hopefully, 390 was our peak, and we hope that continues to go down. Working with Richmond Region Tourism, they came out and delivered some window signage for our different restaurants to indicate they're open and what type of services they're offering. Roxanne Slaren on our office, Economic Development Office, she also went out and delivered some of these as well. If any restaurants don't have them or want them, reach out to our Economic Development Office, and we can make sure they get one. Then, other things we're doing as far as business assistance on our Economic Development website, which is yespowhatan.com, we've got at the top of COVID-19 Resources tab. So check that out, has a great thorough listing of all of the different assistance programs and other resources out there for our local businesses, as well as a restaurant map that shows each of the restaurants in Powhatan County and what their status is. We've also ordered some signage, you can see in the middle there, knowing that not everybody is following us on social media or listening to these meetings or knows to check our website. So we have some signage that will direct people to our website, as well as our phone number for some of our business assistants. So those signs have come in. We're working right now with VDOT Planning Department and Miss Utilities to get those installed. And we'll follow our own temporary signage procedures with that. So we won't be doing anything that the business community isn't able to do with a temporary sign permit. And then, Roxanne, she put out the survey to a couple hundred of our businesses to just find out what kind of impacts they're seeing, what kind of assistance they need. So as we continue to fill that with more information, we'll let you know. We're also starting to actually perform some calls directly to our businesses with assistance from the EDA to just reach out, see what's going on and what kind of assistance they need. And the, since we spoke last, Central Virginia COVID-19 Response Fund was released. That's raised a little over $4 million to date. And it'll go to the region to fund essential services and important programs. And they are matching contributions from individuals up to $100,000. And then, some other updates, these aren't COVID-19 specific, just some regular business that is continuing to happen. We submitted all of our smart scale applications today. So several tens of millions of dollars worth of potential road funding projects. We feel good about our chances on those. So thank you to our Planning Director and Planning Staff for making sure those got in complete and on time this week. And then, some development projects, some significant ones are continuing despite some of the economic difficulties. So Classic Granite and Marble broke ground last week with timbering on the site. And they're looking forward to hopefully, in the future, getting going with the actual construction of the building itself. They're proceeding with that. The Artistry Multi-Family Apartment Projects, which are part of Winterfield Phase Section Two, those broke ground, grading and clearing work started some time ago, but they did actually go ahead and start on construction recently. The Car Wash Project in front of the Land and Coats property, that broke ground last week. And then, at 7:00 tonight, so just about now, Crazy Rooster Brewing is going to be having a Facebook Live event. My understanding is they'll be announcing that they're opening for curbside service April 18th. So we welcome them to the county, obviously not what they envisioned would be happening when they set out to open a new brewery here, you know, a little over a year ago. But we'll welcome them and hope they're successful and get through this. We also had two successful grants awarded here recently. One, the Blue Bell Property, that's the 1,400-acre track along the Appomattox River that was purchased. They got a grant from the Virginia Outdoors Foundation, Commonwealth Regional Land Conservancy, to construct a public trail and kayak launch to the Appomattox River. So that would be the first such public access to the Appomattox in Powhatan County. So a welcome addition. And then, our Planning Department submitted a grant to VOF for some interpretive signage about the Appomattox River watershed and landscaping, and that will be put up at Fighting Creek Park, didn't require any local match. So that's all I have on just kind of administrative update generally. Happy to answer any questions.
I'd just like to make a quick comment, Brett, if you don't mind. So folks will understand, under our Emergency Operations Plan, Brett is our Emergency Management Director. Now, you've just seen him overview all the things that are going on with the county. He's also responsible during this pandemic for running operations in this county. Typical day would mean calls with board members, myself in particular, then conference calls with county administrators in the region. Or it might be like last week, a conference call with Senator Warner, where he's discussing what's going on. where he's discussing what's going on in the various localities with the town managers, county administrators and board chairs. So as I said last meeting, these are not normal times. We're not working normal hours. Your board is working 24/7 with staff who are doing a great job, just like Brett, continuing forward through these difficult times. So I just want to applaud Brett, staff and this board for their efforts on behalf of the county. Questions for Brett? I see Mr. Cox has joined us. Welcome. We're glad you're safe. We can't hear Mr. Cox. Bill, can you hear me? We don't look like we're communicating. So we've got some assistance on the way.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Sorry about that. We just fixed that problem. I apologize to the board for being late. I'm the only one in today's light traffic that could find a traffic jam on Route 60 westbound. And that I did. So I apologize. I'm happy to join you and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No worries. Welcome again, Bill. Okay, at this time, we'll have our first public comment period. Brett, do you want to overview how people are supposed to again call in if they wish to speak to us?
Yeah, so first, people could have emailed in comments. I just checked, we don't have any that way. So if anybody on the line, listening or watching wants to at this point participate, you can either hit the raise hand icon if you're on your computer or on your phone, you can hit star nine. We also have the Q and A chat here. I don't see anything popping up in that, but if you're not able to get through, let us know on there. So yeah, it looks like Mr. Asip has raised his hand. John, if you want to put him through.
Well, let me open the first public comment period. Please come forward if you wish to address the board. If you're an individual, we'll allow you three minutes. If you're speaking for a group, we'll give you five minutes. Brett, do we have somebody that wishes to address the board?
Yes, we do. It looks like we've got them on here now.
Please.
Welcome. Everybody, board members, thank you for your time. It's Mike Asip and I want to thank all of you for your leadership of this county through this crisis. And Brett, your staff have been remarkable. So I just want to say thank you very much from a citizen perspective. We're really feeling that Powhatan is prepared and you're addressing matters that are making this and tuning into the school board also the other night. That our school board and our board of supervisors are showing great leadership. So I thank you, board members, for your leadership and support in supporting the efforts of our staff to keep Powhatan safe and healthy and running as best we can. And I just want to put a plug in to support our restaurants and businesses. As we do, we're ordering out a fair amount to try to get, keep our restaurants, businesses open. So we are gaining weight, but enjoying it, doing it, enjoying Powhatan County. So I want to say thank you to the board and appreciate all you're doing.
Thank you and stay safe. Thank you, sir. Anybody else, Brett, do you see would like to address the board?
I don't see anybody else right now. We've got a couple other, you can see who's in here. I recognize a couple of the names, some of them abbreviated, I'm not sure. But I don't see anybody else raising their hands right now. We will have the second public comment period, of course.
Okay, so I will close the first public comment period. Old Business, we'll now get an update on the schools FY '20 and FY '21 budgets. Do we have Dr. Jones joining us?
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, or good evening. How are you today?
Welcome, Dr. Jones. Good to see you.
Thank you, you too, and members of the board of, good to see you and be with you this evening. Wanted to first, we gave the school board an update on FY '20 and '21 budgets on Tuesday evening. I believe Mr. Shardine has forwarded that presentation to board members, but just some highlights quickly. FY '20, we are certainly monitoring everything. We've reduced spending on any new purchases. Typically, we wait till spring to purchase equipment, just to make sure that funding is secure and that we meet our appropriation each year. So we've restricted all purchases except for those that are related to the distance learning that we're working with, with our students. We did purchase some hotspots that we're passing out to teachers that have internet issues, as well as our students, some webcams, a few other things. But other than that, we've pretty much restricted all our purchases moving forward. We're monitoring payroll and other things on a monthly basis to make sure. And because we know that sales tax revenue is something that we need to keep an eye on, lottery proceeds on a Leicester basis. So we feel good about where we are for FY '20, but certainly it's something that we're keeping a close eye on. Happy to answer any questions on FY '20, if the board, if that's the board's pleasure, or I can move right into FY '21 and answer questions at the end.
Any questions for Dr. Jones at this particular point on FY '20? Dr. Jones, if you will?
Sure. So FY '21, so as I know all of us are aware, there's a lot of uncertainty with next year's budget. We did receive a couple pieces of information today that I forwarded to Mr. Shardine. One is, is that we got a spreadsheet from the Virginia Department of Education that listed what Powhatan County Schools is slated to receive from the CARES Act. That looks like we'll receive about $200,000. So we'll get reimbursement for some of these purchases that I just listed for you, as well as other time and equipment that we've had to purchase as a result of this closure. So that was certainly good news. And we will be applying for that and following procedures to make sure that we receive those funds. That's about 85% of the allotment from the federal government for that first CARES Act. The other 15% that DOE is holding back for special cases or other distribution. So there's a chance that Powhatan will get some additional funding, but it's too early to tell on that matter. The second piece of information that we got is information, at least preliminary information from the state on the governor's proposed budget amendments. And we will not receive, normally we receive a calculation tool from the Virginia Department of Education when the governor releases one of his budgets and then another one when the General Assembly approves it, since they are usually different. But in this case, because the General Assembly is slated to meet on April 22nd, we didn't receive the calculation tool for the governor's proposed budget. We're just going to get one at the end when the General Assembly acts. We did however, receive kind of a summary document. It's not as detailed as we like because it doesn't give us a lot of specifics. But we've been working with that all day and we've kind of calculated that it looks like we'll receive somewhere between $450,000 and $500,000 less from the state than what the General Assembly's approved budget was back in, I'm sorry, I've lost track of time, was that March, end of February, March? So we were slated to get a just slightly over a $1 million increase. It looks like it'll be somewhere a little less than, or a little more than half of that increase from the state dollars for next year. So we're certainly thankful that it's not more, but certainly that is, will put a, will result in us making some reductions in our budget. And so we begun looking at that, working on that process even well ahead of this because the board did adopt their budget as statutory, as were required to by statute on March 31st. We have to do that by April 1st, so we waited as long as we could to try to get some more detail. But at that point, we adopted a budget that had items that we had talked about with the county, the 2% raise for our employees, 3% for our bus drivers, four points, one, two additional FTEs, seven small stipend increases. And we had about $350,000 in line item increases, mainly instructional materials, supplies, as well as increases in O and M and some other categories. So we've certainly have those items ready to look at and to to reduce based on our appropriations that we receive at state and the local level. So that's kind of where we are. Hopefully we'll have a final number from the state. I anticipate by the end of next week or beginning of the following week. And but I think it will fall between that range unless the General Assembly does something drastically different than what the governor was proposed. And that's kind of where we are in our process. I know that I'll be presenting our budget on April 27th, I believe, and happy to provide more detail at that time and certainly happy to answer any questions that the board has now.
Questions for Dr. Jones?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Cox?
If I could, not so much some questions, but some comments and some thoughts, Dr. Jones, and these are mine. Not anybody else is on the board, just the things I've been thinking about. The change, of course, in this year's budget is it's all about revenues. It's not about expenditures. We simply are, have little in our crystal ball which shows us what the revenues are going to be, particularly in 2021. We have jurisdictions such as Henrico County telling us they're going to take a $100 million hit. We have Chesterfield County who is looking at millions of dollars in their 2020 budget and even more in their 2021. As I look at our budget and we start to go forward, there are kind of three things that I'm embracing, if you will. One is to spend as little money as possible. Two is to build as big a cash contingency fund as we possibly can to give us some level of financial flexibility. And to be prepared to look at the budget certainly quarterly, but more likely on a monthly basis as we see these things unfolding. So what does that mean to me? As it relates to the school budget. One, once again, this is, these are just my thoughts, Dr. Jones, nobody else's. I would tell you that the $904,000 transfer will not happen. That we will put that money in a contingent fund. That essentially pays for your salary increases, FTEs and stipend increases. I would also suggest to you that what we really need is for you to take a look at your budget and look at a way to reduce the transfer that the county makes to the schools of 2021 versus 2020. In other words, a 2021 transfer would be less than the 2020 transfer. I don't have a percentage. I don't, I'm not looking for a number. That is your world. You understand it much more than I. These are really painful things to talk about, but we're in painful times and I don't think anybody expects to get out of the year of the pandemic without some pain. This chairman, that's my thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Any other comments, questions for Dr. Jones? Dr. Jones, I'm, you know, talking to other jurisdictions. And in conversation with them, Richland, Henrico, Hanover, City of Richmond, to name a few, they're looking at keeping their real estate rates at their current level. And then they're looking at budget reductions in the neighborhood of approximately 5%. And the reason they're doing that is because, going back to what Mr. Cox says, nobody knows what this looks like. Some of the comments I've read in the newspaper from Chesterfield, for example, we just don't know what the revenues are going to look like. In the conference call with Senator Warner, one of the rural counties, I believe it was Page County, asked the question, they said, well, what's in the relief packages for rural counties? Because we're heavily dependent, as you know, on our property taxes, you know, for our revenue. So if something happens with our collection rates, and it will, we just don't know exactly what the impact is going to be at this point. Mr. Cox is exactly right. Where do we make up a 20% difference? You know, who's talking about helping us in rural counties? And Senator Warner was very empathetic and he said that was something that he'd be looking into, something for us. Because again, if we get into November and the bottom has still been out of the tub and people are not able to pay their real estate taxes or their property taxes, where will we make up the money? So we're trying to be very concerned. I know I am, and again, I'm speaking like Mr. Cox is for myself. But that's generally where I'm at. I'm looking at where I can save dollars to have them available to meet the unknown challenge that we know is out there. And I know you're having the same conversations, you know, with your school board.
Yes.
Let me also say one other thing. And I said this to the chairman of your school board, we had a conversation the other night. Y'all did a heck of a job with your logistics. When y'all, when the governor came in and said y'all were closed for the rest of the year. I'll never forget that Monday that y'all came to school when the kids weren't there. You had to do lesson plans, you had to develop a plan for getting out the homework, plans for getting meals to kids. You did a great job.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that.
We thank you for what you did.
Sure. And if I could, Mr. Chairman, certainly we understand that this is, you know, these are unique times and that there's a lot of uncertainty. We certainly are prepared to do our part and we know that we begun looking at what that would look like at certain levels. And, you know, we'll, we have each department beginning to look at their areas and where reductions might occur. So we are beginning that work and we know that this is, you know, that the budget that was adopted in March is nowhere going to be what our final budget looks like. We're under no illusions in that case.
We, that was communicated to us. We knew that. We knew it was going to be changes.
Yep.
But again, you know, we want to work with you any way we can because we said from the beginning, you know, we're one county.
Absolutely.
And again, I want to applaud you and your people, your school board for what they've done in the worst of times.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. Jones? Dr. Jones, again, thank you.
Absolutely.
Stay safe.
Enjoy the rest of your evening. Stay safe, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now we'll move to the update on the county's budget. Brett, are you going to do that? Is Charlotte going to do that?
Yeah, I'll walk us through it and Charlotte can jump in as needed and help me out. And quickly, I saw right when we ended that last public comment period, we did have one participant raise their hand named Curtis. So hopefully if they can, just hang on and we'll make sure we get to you. I'm in the second one, we just missed him there. Okay, I'm going to try to share my screen here again. Are y'all seeing that okay?
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
Chairman, can I interrupt? Can you hear me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Hey, I'm sorry. I tried to get Dr. Jones right at the tail end there. And I would just like to add one thing, if you can give me like 30 seconds.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just encourage the school side, you know, I don't want to oversimplify, but basically the board of supervisors working with the school board decides on an amount that's appropriate for the school side of our county finances. And then they have their own elected officials over there that help drive policy and with Dr. Jones and Larry Johns, et cetera. They decide exactly what to do with the money. But I would like to kind of add just a couple of things to what Mr. Cox said and that, and I agree with where he was going. The schools were already looking at reductions in, in the following areas. The schools were already looking at reductions in, in the following areas. And this would be something I would encourage them to focus on. The areas for reduction would be salary increases, as in whether or not to have them and if so, what amount. For full-time positions that they were looking at to reduce that or eliminate it, we could go for a half hour on line items, which we won't. But also, the thing nobody wants to talk about, and I'm certainly not promoting this as policy. And it, you know, this would be school board policy, not Board of Supervisor. But, you know, we have to be realistic. I would encourage them to at least look at positions, total positions, and whether there needs to be a reduction in those salaries and also benefits. Basically, the, the largest cost of any organization is the people, the salaries, how many people are working for you and the benefits and how much you assist with that. So I know I'm kind of touching the third rail. And again, it's not the Board of Supervisor's decision on those, but I would encourage them to look at the whole package and not leave that part of it out because that is a huge, huge chunk of money. And if there's a possibility of, of saving somewhere, we may need that down the lines. Nobody knows where this is going at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Norvik. Brett?
Okay.
Are you ready to continue?
Yeah, yeah, can you hear me okay? Yep, can y'all hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay, good. Yes, at first, just start by saying, you know, this is our, our best guess at some of these numbers right now. They do seem to change daily or weekly as we get more information. But as of today, you know, this is kind of the scenario that we're looking at. I just want to thank Charlotte, you know, she's put in a lot of the work helping me with running a whole bunch of different numbers, you know, looking at this from every single angle. And just emphasize that we do have some time on the county side. We'll, we'll adopt the school budget first, but we have some more time on the county side. Every single week that goes by, we know more than we did the week before, both about this emergency and our financial situation in it. So we'll just go through some of them today, just understanding that, you know, the next time we show you, you know, some things are likely to change again. So we'll just look at the kind of estimates of where we are as we round out the fiscal 20 year, looking at some of our current estimates for revenue going into the next fiscal year, some of the expenditures. Then when we first met on the budget, I just touched on some future year expenditures, so kind of update you on those. And then lastly, just look at the updated budget calendar and our steps between now and July 1. So first, looking at fiscal year 20, we feel like we'll be okay finishing out that year. We tend to be pretty conservative.
Brett, excuse me.
Yep.
I, I can't read that screen.
We had, did we get this? Is this?
I'll, I'll send it to you. So I'll, the specific numbers here aren't as important for this presentation, but I'll send it all to you so you have it to take your time and go through it. If you have any questions, follow up.
Like, now I can, now I can see the numbers, I'm not seeing the whole screen at one time. But at least if you can coordinate with John to go through the spreadsheet in such a way that you can keep, you know, the magnification on and be at the right place, I think we can get through this.
Okay, yeah. And if not, again, we're on some of these slides, not drilling down into each of the specific numbers, but just talking about the overall theme or the big picture. So the one here, and again, I'll, I'll send these all out to you after this and we'll make them available to the public as well. Again, just with the caveat that, you know, if anybody has questions, check with us and make sure you're working off of the latest one because all of these numbers will again continue to change. But for fiscal year 20, looking at where we were in the first three quarters and finishing out this last fourth quarter of the fiscal year, we feel like we'll be okay through the year. Generally, we're pretty conservative anyways when we prepare a budget like this. And typically, we come out significantly to the good at the end of the year with what's left over. We've also asked all of our department heads to limit any non-essential spending in this fiscal year and also let us know what spending they feel like they will have to make, what is essential, so we have a better idea of what will get spent in this last quarter. So we've ran all those numbers and again, we'll continue to monitor that as we get more information on the revenues and expenditures. But right now, feel like at least for fiscal year 20, we will be okay in finishing this year out.
Brett, could we, could we go back to that, please?
Yep.
If I read this correctly, you have estimated revenues of, this is for 2020, for $60,358, is that correct? For June of 2020?
Yes, yes.
So we have estimated revenues of $60,359,000. And we have expenditures of $60,359,000.
Sorry, if you, sorry, if you go over further to the FY '21 projected revenues, then you'll see $61,363,000.
Okay, so we go. So why do we have that estimate? If the estimated revenue line is of no use, why is it on there?
Yeah, Charlotte, can you explain what that first one is on the far left versus?
Yes, that, that is me taking a look at where we are right now and, and kind of doing my best based on what I'm seeing through the nine months of the year so far and coming up where I think we're going to land. It's the same concept I do, I did for the budget early on to come up with what I think the estimated fund balance at the end of the year is going to be. Yes, sir.
Okay, so the estimated revenues for 2020.
Yes.
$60,359,000.
And I would focus more on the general fund. I'm assuming with social services and CSA that we're going to spend everything, which means we're going to receive all the revenue we estimated as well as make that transfer from the general fund to them. So I am making the assumption that we're going, that they're going to spend everything they've got, although I know that they are, they probably will not.
Understand that, let me, if I could, please, let me get to the central question. Revenues, okay, on this, $60,359,000. And we have estimated expenditures of $61,582,000. So we're, we're going to lose a million two in 2020, is that right?
Yes, and you have to remember that includes in that estimated expenditures is the budgeted transfer to the capital projects fund, which we come from the capital maintenance reserve. That's why their expenditures tend to end up being higher than the revenues. We are using capital maintenance reserve money to transfer over to the general fund. But I include it because it does impact your fund balance.
Yes, ma'am, I just caught up with you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, sorry, we could have put some more explanation into this as far as the slide, but.
Can I, can I ask a question there to Charlotte?
Please go through, Chair.
Would that be all right, Chair?
Please.
Sure, thank you. Charlotte.
Yes, sir.
Those numbers that you have there are, these are the updated current numbers that you're projecting. Those numbers, after we found out everything we found out about what's getting ready to happen, are higher than the numbers that you gave us in terms of revenue for March the 2nd?
That, that is correct. And a lot of that has to do with at January or February, when I was working on this, I was being conservative on building permits. We also received some bond proceeds and we refinanced. And I did make some adjustments to real estate and personal property based on what I know since the is, is getting ready to be finalized. So those had reductions to them. We also had increases in delinquent taxes. I don't factor, I don't try to project how much delinquent taxes we're going to collect. I look at it at a certain time and say, if we didn't get any more at this moment, this is all we're going to get of people that owe us taxes. So I've gone through and just looked at, some of those things increased. Recordation taxes and stuff, as people are still recording deeds and things from homes that have closed recently. So those numbers have increased, even though our real estate and personal property have a decline, a slight decline in. So that's kind of where I looked at it. It's, it's, so yes, that's, that it has made a difference.
So will our real estate collection that transpires on June the 5th, are those numbers included in, in the?
Yes.
19 or the fiscal year 20?
Fiscal year 20, yes, sir.
So there, you've included them in that 60, that $60,358,000, correct?
Yes, sir.
So that number has increased based upon what we thought we were going to get when you were back in November and December preparing this for March 2nd?
Yeah, well, yes, I had, I, I re-looked at those and there was a, a, I factored in that we would, might take a decline in the June 5th collection, but we had an increase in the first half. Because, you know, when we're doing the, the real estate assessments, we use the assessment and we say we're only going to collect a certain percentage. So we only budget 97%, but there's a likelihood that we could collect even more than the 97% and that's what we're hoping for. We had, and then also our delinquent tax collection. So it's a moving target all the time. We read, we look at it, I, I checked, I will start checking as the bills go out. I will start looking every week how much we've collected, where we are, to make sure that if we need to cut back even more on anything, I have a chance to say to, to adjust for that. But I have looked at it and we have looked at different scenarios, Mr. Shardan and I, about how much do we think is good guarantee from escrow? How much with the Treasurers Office and the Commissioner of Revenue? How much add a lower collection percentage to the remaining of what's not what we think isn't escrow? But we don't have an exact number. But we did try to recalculate and relook at all these numbers to, to redo this spreadsheet. And I will continue to look at that as things continue to move on.
Yeah, and I, and the one final question, just yes or no, if you don't mind. The $61 million that you're projecting revenues for FY '21, that's also the same. Am I reading that correctly?
That's correct. I did not adjust those columns as we are still, I know Mr. Shardan is going to go through some information on fiscal year 21, but since we are still working through that, I really did not adjust those columns currently. That's just the budgeted, the original budgeted revenues and expenditures. And then we know those are going to change.
Okay, I think, I just, I hadn't seen any of this before tonight, so I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
No problem.
Thank you, Mr. Baller, Brett.
Okay. Yeah, then looking some of the considerations and methodology that we're using right now for fiscal '21, basically two, two major scenarios right now. And again, as we get more information, these will certainly change. But one, typically, we see, and in the fiscal '21 original draft budget, we were expecting a collection rate of 97.8% across the board. In the last recession, we had 94, 95% overall collection rate. So we have one scenario that would be 94.0, so with the, the lower end or the lowest that we've experienced since then. Then we also have about half, 46% of those accounts are paid by escrow. So those should continue paying in full, at least for some period of time. So we've also had one scenario where we apply 100% collection rate to those escrow accounts and then the 94% to the, the other rough half that remain to give us two different kind of, one more optimistic scenario and one hopefully worst-case scenario. So looking at what those mean, this would be the one where we, again, the more optimistic scenario and what that would mean. So that would be a $1.7 million or nearly 3% reduction for fiscal year 21. That, because of the number of things that we had proposed increases in the original budget, we're able to relatively, you know, easily go in administratively and find those cuts and balance the budget for that. Now, if we look at the 94%, that would be a more significant reduction. That would be about 2.6 million or nearly 5%. That's where, you know, we would need to certainly work with you all because then we're not talking about not doing new things or adding new things, but we're actually going back and going to have to, you know, stop certain services or reduce certain services, you know, reduce or eliminate programs. And we're talking about, you know, actual employees.
Brett, let me stop you there, if you will.
Yep.
Brett, when you say, you know, reduction of potentially 4.64, would that just be on our side of the house? Or would we be looking at that across the whole county?
So that would be, you know, on our side.
We'd be working with the schools to get to that number?
Correct.
Are you just saying that's what it would have to be on the county side?
Yeah, so for this, this one right here is just looking at the county side of it. We would have to work with the schools and see, do we, do we share in the reductions evenly? How we've, you know, typically in the past, more evenly shared than any excess revenue? Or are, are we on the county side, are they on the school side, able to better absorb some of that reduction?
Speaking for myself, and we had this conversation this afternoon, I would like for you to have dialogue with Dr. Jones and also some dialogue with the other jurisdictions in terms of how they're working with the schools to meet the target reductions of approximately 5% that I mentioned previously in the other jurisdictions. I think it's, I think it's important that we understand how that's going to be shared or not shared. You know, when we start talking about the reduction of 4.64 in revenues on, on property taxes, that's, that's, that's a significant question that has to be resolved.
Yes, sir, yep. We'll, we'll continue those conversations with Dr. Jones and I'll continue talking with our peers and see how they're doing. And I know some of them I've talked to are, are a little different, you know.
Yeah, please.
Yep. But yeah, so this is where we'll, you know, this, this scenario, something like this or slightly better, slightly worse, that's where especially it'll be critical, you know, to find out from the board and the public, you know, what are our priorities? You know, where, where do we all feel we can make sacrifices and cuts? Because then it is going back and again, reducing services and staff.
Mr. Chairman, before we go, Brett, before we go forward, can we go back? You show on this slide the school transfer of negative $904,000. Is that the new construction money?
Correct, yep.
Okay, so not an actual reduction in our transfer or reduction in the increase that we were going to give them?
Correct, yeah, that would be removing the new money, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Because one of the things I suggested to Dr. Jones was that $904,000 might not occur and that they needed to look for a real reduction in the transfer from the county to the schools 2021 versus 2020.
Mr. Cox, I talked to Dellicard Lee Ware yesterday. He shared with me when the governor signed off on the budget that all new spending was taken out. So I'm, I'm of the understanding that the raises, being as they represented new spending, came out of the budget downtown.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm finished, Brett, thanks.
Okay, yep, thank you. Then just looking at these different collection rates and how they would apply to different tax rates. So first, in the left there, you have what was shown under our original fiscal 21-year budget. So 80 cents would have been the revenue neutral rate with the new assessments, 88 being our current rate. And then we just show you down each what those would mean and what they would generate with the, again, the more optimistic scenario and the full across-the-board 94% scenario from the revenue neutral all the way up to the current rate in place today. So as you all start to think about in May, letting us know what tax rate you want to advertise, again, understanding that we can always, just like we did with the school board budget, advertise something higher and adopt lower, can't go the other way. But as you all start to think about that over this month, these, using these numbers, this is what each would generate. Then just looking at some reductions that we're already talking about for fiscal year 21. Again, these are just things that we think are kind of common sense, clearly, just out of, out of the picture now. If we get into some of these other scenarios like the 94%, then we'll, we'll work with you all to determine what are the priorities, where we find the other cuts and work with our department. If we get into some of these other scenarios like the ninety four percent, then we'll we'll work with you all to determine what are the priorities, where we find the other cuts and work with our department heads. One, the health insurance increases that we were talking about earlier previously. Those did end up coming in less than expected, so there's thirty three thousand savings there. We had proposed originally about a quarter million in new positions or changes, so those would be off the table now. And then along with schools and our neighbors in the region, we had proposed a two percent merit increase for employees. Again, thinking the same line of schools and across the board with everybody in the region, that would be off the table as well right now. Then personnel, these are just some of the specific changes that when we say we would eliminate that roughly quarter million in new positions or changes. These are some of the specific things that we're talking about, so I I won't go through and list or spell out every single one, but you'll have these slides if you want to go through it. If you have any particular questions about them. And then some on the social services side. Then some changes to operating, we would still have nine one one communications, additional tower rent, electricity. And the next gen nine one one and LMR, those projects are still moving forward, so we had some increases there. We had originally proposed some IT enhancements, some of those we would put on hold, some of them we would certainly continue to do from a security standpoint. As well as some of the remote technology like we're using now. Some of the others you can see there currently would be taken out and removed. Also, the registrar, we still have some compliance as does everyone in the state for the next election and security. So been working with John Wood and Karen Alexander on some options to do that. So we'll we'll have numbers for you later in the year on that, but that's something that we won't really have a choice. We have to come into compliance with that. And then some of the unfunded things, again, these were unfunded in my original proposal, so that has not changed, but again, just listing them there. And some additional. And then working with Ramona Carter and her staff in Public Works, as well as Sharla, I give you just the status on some capital projects. We have either put on hold or moved into future years for some savings or to limit spending in the future. So one, the ERP, the county's financial and permitting software update. I still think that's something we do want to move forward with. Certainly, if we had had it in place already, you know, a year or two ago. Many of the things we're doing as far as working remotely probably would have been a lot easier. But right now, the state we're in, we're not going to be able to realistically put this in place and implement it during this. Both from a staffing standpoint and just, you know, wanting to make sure we're in a good enough financial place to go forward with that, so.
I have a question on this.
Please, Ms. Carmack.
With these capital projects, we, if I'm not mistaken, we borrow the money for these, correct?
Yeah, but most of them were in that that debt financing package, so we would, we spoke with them, Bond Council about that. And they said they don't have to be these projects, they do have to be capital projects, so we can't move that debt money outside of capital projects. But if there were to be new capital projects added, those would be eligible. They don't have to be projects that were on our CIP when that debt was issued. I I don't really see right now any capital projects that will arise out of this pandemic. And we're certainly not going to create new, you know, nice to have projects in this environment. So I don't know that they'll really change. But on most of these, we do have some time.
So but we have the money and it's basically sitting there getting ready to get used, and we're I'm assuming we're paying interest and everything on that. I'm just curious of how this works. I mean, when we.
Yeah, and and some of them too, we we have the money from the debt financing, but some of them would also incur, like the Eastern Convenience Center, some operating increases and expenses that aren't part of that debt financing. So I'm holding off on some of the these, even though we have the capital money in hand and available, we're also delaying and deferring some of those operating and personnel expenses.
Thanks.
Yeah, so on the ERP, certainly as soon as we're ready, we would like to continue that. We've talked with our our consultant. And they've talked with some of the companies have bid on this, and they they understand hitting pause on it, so we'll be able to pick that back up when we're ready. Bathroom renovations, those were about to begin. We've talked to the contractor and they were very understanding and willing to put those on hold while we see where we come out of this. Eastern Convenience Center, we've stopped at the design phase to not incur any other cost on that now, so that's something we can again, pick up later. I know with us limiting some of the convenience center, you know, that's been some point of contention and concern from some of the citizens, so might be apprehensive to delay this one, but the timeline, you know, even if we went forward with it. This Eastern Convenience Center is not going to be built and constructed in time to really have an impact on what we're experiencing today. That's going to be a longer term project, so I I don't think there's any reason to not delay. And then the courthouse parking expansion, again, that had originally some design work started on that. We're hitting pause on that.
Mr. Chairman.
Excuse me, let Ms. Carmack go first.
I apologize for this question, but so if we have the money and we're paying on it. Why are we putting the projects on hold? I mean, I understand, is it because we're concerned about the capital outlay once they're up and running? But to me, if you have the money and you're already paying interest on it. I I may mean, how we understand what's the point of putting them on hold if we can't utilize that money to do something else?
Yeah. Yep. Mainly the with some of these, the operating expenses that would be added. The bathroom renovations, no, there's not going to be any operating with that. So something like that, we could continue. Same with the courthouse expansion. The ERP would eventually in the long term, hopefully help reduce the need for staff, but in the interim. Actually implementing that and getting off the ground would be a big lift by the staff. So I I don't know now would be the the perfect time to do that. And again, the Eastern Convenience Center would add some additional operating expenses and staffing to it. So we could, you know, certainly work with Ms. Carter and Public Works and see if some of these does make sense to proceed on, but at first, especially when this was coming out of us much faster last month, we just kind of hit pause on on everything to take stock. But I think you make a good point that some of these now we can start to look at a little differently and maybe proceed with some of them. So certainly we'll continue to work with you all before we do go ahead with anything, but yeah, we'll look at that. Good point.
Yeah, I'm just saying, if we've already paid for it and we're paying on it, I mean.
Let let me follow up on Mrs. Carmack's question, because I was sitting here thinking the same thing. We've already gone into the bond market. We borrowed for it. We have the money. There's no operating expenses in conjunction with courthouse parking expansion. Bathroom renovations, I don't see anybody having to be added for that, no operating expenses. The ERP, that's thorny. Eastern Convenience Center, yeah, that's going to mean, you know, additional people, so you've got operating expenses for that. But what I would like for you to do, Brett, is to get with Ramona and flesh this out. I mean, what is the issue why? Or why we would go forward with each one of these projects? Give us give us reasons why we should do it or shouldn't do it, so the board can better understand where we are with these, okay?
Okay, yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
Please, Mr. Cox.
With respect to the courthouse parking expansion. This is a project that's shrouded in mystery in terms of whoever wanted it in the first place, what is trying to accomplish and who's involved? I would like to see a complete re-vetting of the courthouse parking expansion project. So that I could explain to somebody what it is that we're trying to do and why it makes sense and why the cost is a good thing for the county to bear. That that particular project has created a lot of confusion.
Mr. Cox, I totally agree. I've had a conversation, actual meeting with Brett and Ramona to try to get myself fully equipped and understanding what the project was about and asking the same questions you did. And we had resolved that we were going to come back to the board with the information that you requested before we go forward, so that we understand the scope of the project, origination of the project. And be able to understand the different costs associated with it. So Brett, if you would do that, you know, get that in the works so that that can be accomplished with the board, I would appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely, we'll do. We were, yeah, as you said, we met on it with Ms. Carter out there on site and we were preparing to bring some more information to the board, and then this whole kind of bomb got dropped on us, so we'll make sure we pick that back up and get you all what you look for, what what you're looking for.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please, Ms. Barlow.
Brett. Let me ask you this. We we we've borrowed money for each one of those four projects, if I if I'm not correct. I think we're we, is there the bathroom that we haven't?
Bathroom, we haven't, yes.
Okay, the the other three we have. And here's another thing, and in in with these economic times that we're facing. As you dig into this with Ramona, as as the chairman has asked you to do. Is it also a possibility, maybe, that as time goes on, we can renegotiate? Or maybe get another bid from another another contractor on any of or all three of those projects? I think that that's a a wise thing to do with taxpayers' money. If you can find an opportunity to save. We should take advantage of that, and I think we're we'll see that those opportunities will present themselves in the very near future.
Thank you, Ms. Barlow.
Yeah, great point, Mr. Barley. We'll we'll work with Ramona and see, you know, any of these that either haven't bid yet or ones that have, what opportunities and abilities we have to rebid or find other savings. So yeah, good point. Okay, then just going through some of the other ones that were just proposing to push out to further future years. Again. We can reevaluate any of these at any time, but currently, some of these that we could push out to future years on there.
Could we could could we go back one? Thank you. When we talk about.
Please.
Yeah, I'm sorry. When we talk about the possibility of taking the funds for the projects that were on a previous slide and using them for something else. The flatlock, frat, flatrock, Coramine Booster Station Evaluation potentially would save us money, would it not?
Correct, yep.
So if we were to think about spending money for something other than the projects we had, if we have a project in the future years that will save us money. That's maybe something we should consider.
Yeah.
That's that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Cox.
Yeah, and and that's a great point. We also might find that some of these things when we're on on, you know, a normal time, our priorities are different now, so we might find some where, you know, bathroom renovations, while those are aged and I I think sorely needed. When we're in this kind of situation, that might fall to a lower priority than some of these other things. So I think it is wise that we all, you know, reevaluate and make sure as we move some of these capital projects forward, they meet our current prioritization. But again, no decision's been made on these yet. They're just ones that we're looking to push to future years, and you'll have time later this year to again, look at the revised CIP. Some here as well, proposing push out to future fiscal years. Few more there, and then I'll show you some that we are still planning to proceed with. So projects that we are proceeding with. Skaggs Road work is going on that. It'll also allow us to move out of the building that Public Works is currently in, which is the last rented space the county has, so we will have a reduction in the annual rent there. The gym upgrades to the Pocahontas Landmark Center, we have scaled those back, so we're not doing the full and complete or not proposing the full and complete upgrade and changes, but just kind of the minimal to allow that to be used. Social Security and Commonwealth Attorney, those are both security upgrades we would propose continuing with. The Village Street Sign Project, that was already partially completed. The signs are already purchased and in hand, so we would propose to finish that out. And then we have a backstop at the park. There's a safety issue that we would propose to continue with as well. So there's some projects that we would suggest that we continue work on. Then just updating you, when we met originally on the budget, look to future years of some things on the horizon that would be expenditures, so just kind of giving you a status update where we think we are on those. Again, the ERP purchase and the ongoing maintenance that would come with that. Again, that's on hold now. We'll continue discussions about what date we pick that back up. LMR Land Mobile Radio, that project, Tom Nolan and his team is continuing to move along. That will be critical to our first responders and public safety. That project is funded. Buses to purchase with the Dominion Energy Grant, as you recall, for the solar buses, schools would like to proceed with those if possible. Election Security, again, we don't really have a choice in coming compliance with that, so it's ongoing. But Karen, John and I are working to find the best, most affordable solution to assure compliance with the new election laws. Reassessment, that will come back again in fiscal year twenty two. Broadband. You know, I I know you all are eager to pick that back up, as are the citizens in the public. So my thoughts would be, we just wait to finish out the strategic plan, which we got far along on, and then pick up with that broadband workshop that we had planned on. Otherwise, in the background, John Weather, IT Director, and I are continuing to talk with interested parties as they become available. Proffer Model, we had talked about developing that kind of in kind with what Gichlin did, and feeding into that would be a transportation plan, major thoroughfare plan. Water and sewer master plan update. So we'll, you know, again, that's something we will certainly want to do in the future, but we'll just put it on hold for now. And then the other things that we had all talked about being potentially on the horizon, unfortunately, now are all the more real with looking at a recession. Coronavirus and then General Assembly mandates, and now more of the focus rather than unfunded mandates is just how little or how much assistance we will get, and then how much of that later on, you know, gets made up by localities. Again, this is often the case. Then looking at our revised budget calendar. So at the top, we've got tonight's meeting on there. April twenty seventh, we have our regular monthly meeting. That will include the public hearing on the school board budget. May fourth, budget workshop where you will have the opportunity to adopt the school board budget. Also let Charlotte and I know what tax rate to advertise. Again, knowing that we could always adopt something in the future lower than what we advertise. June first, have a budget workshop where we decide what budget you all wish to advertise. June fifteenth, public hearing on the tax rate. June twenty second, public hearing on the budget and the fee schedule. I don't believe we have any increases proposed in our fee schedule this year. I think that's for the most part remaining the same. And then the deadline for us are the last meeting we show to adopt the budget, end of June, so that would be adoption of the budget, the real estate tax rate and our fee schedule. So any questions on the schedule going forward?
Brett, we had talked about, you know, if we didn't have the information such that we felt like we needed from schools, you know, for a variety of reasons, you know, it's still a moving target with the amounts of money. We could elect to transfer that amount of money equal to the salaries, the teacher salaries that were needed for contracts. And then continue to work on the budget, could we not?
Yep, absolutely. I've talked about that very scenario with Dr. Jones. They're they're certainly open to that. So that is one option we have going forward. I think we've done it in the past as well. So, yep, we're absolutely looking at that.
Thank you. Any other questions for Brad, board members? Brett, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, at this time, we will have our second public comment period. Those wishing to address the board, please limit yourself to three minutes. If you're an individual, if you represent a group, we will provide you with five minutes. Brett, provide me with the usual assistance. Do we have anybody that would like to address the board?
Yep, we do see the user name Curtis there. They have their hand raised. Anybody else that wants to participate, find the raise your hand icon on there or get in the chat. Or if you're on your phone, star nine.
Hello? Not hearing you. Brett, who's trying to address us?
Yeah, that is the name we're. Yeah, that is, the name we're showing here is Curtis. I can hear some, some background noise there. So I think they are on.
Up here on stage.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I was Curtis Newton on 2000 Jews Ferry Road.
Welcome.
Oh, thank you. I looked over the budget items today. I'm encouraged by all y'all's comments and. Everybody seems to be down with making the necessary adjustments and cuts in the expenditures. I hope we can keep the tax rate at the lower 80 cents and make any adjustments on the expenditure side. I didn't look a whole lot at the county budget other than the real estate taxes. And. I've looked at that over before and there's not a whole lot of wiggle room there in most things. And the biggest thing is salaries and benefits. And I think you, y'all have already addressed those. And looking at the school budget. It showed a date of February the 10th, the one I, I pulled up on the internet. So I'm sure there's been a lot of changes since then. The problem was it, it includes 2018 and 2019 actual, then 2020 and 21 budgets. Looking, I've, I've picked out like 25 line items that I had questions about. And basically what I did was look at the larger items and there were a number where, there was a couple where. A good number where the 2020 and the 2021 budgets are the same. One was the equipment, the exact same figure. And I'm figuring maybe they didn't purchase the. They put off the purchase in 2020 and moved it to 21. I'm, I'm not sure. A lot of the other items were. Some was as little as zero expenditures and then a budget of $20,000. Or an expenditure of. And a title two, there was expenditures and purchased services. For tuition reimbursement. They spent 2,300 and 1,100, I mean, 11,000 in the prior two years. And the, the two budgets showed 20,000. And. The RV, RVA. It was like a governor's school. It, it said four students at 9175, but the budget was 82,000. And. The prior two years, the maximum that had been spent in 2019 was 58,000. And those were the type of things I looked, I looked at and I'm going to try to put a worksheet together and send, send to you. And so that can be looked at. But basically that's what was happening was. I'm sure there's explanations because well, the biggest thing is. There's no 20. 19. There's no current year actual numbers were there at what I was looking at. So you couldn't, that, that threw everything off. But like I said, I'm, I'm pleased that y'all are taking their heart is that you're looking to take their heart is that they're going to be necessary. I look forward to the future meetings.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Wood, do we have somebody calling in? That was three minutes, okay. Brett, do we have anybody else?
I don't see anybody else raising their hand right now. Maybe we just give it just another second since last time we closed out Mr. Curtis a little early. But now I'm not, not seeing anybody else.
I will close the second public hearing. Can I demonstrate a comments, Brett?
I, I think you heard it all tonight, but I just again publicly thank our staff. They're working hard, doing a good job. Thank the public. You know, they're helping keep our numbers low and they're being very understanding of the situation we're in. And then just thank the board. You all have been, you know, engaged, but very patient and helping us ask the right questions. You know, we're trying to think of them all, but inevitably there's something that we don't think of. So we're all, we're all helping each other make sure we're doing this the best we can. So thank all of you.
Thank you, Brett. And Brett, would you please make sure that all the board members get copies of all the documents that were presented tonight? I know y'all were working on these up to the last moment today, but if you could, could you get copies to the board members?
Yes, will do.
Okay, thank you. Board member comments.
The county attorney, forgot his comments. I don't know if he had. Did you ask?
I don't think he's on.
Oh, he's not. I'm sorry.
He is, he's on.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you. County Attorney comments.
That's right. I'm offended now. No, just kidding. The only thing I was going to add, we're talking, we're talking about this budget time and crisis. I, i- is one of the options we do have is to adopt a budget and not appropriate. So we have the option of using the appropriating vehicle as a way to kind of hold the cash back and then we can amend the budget if we need to later. Just thought I'd add that.
Thank you, Tom. You know, Sharla had shared that with us previously. So thank y'all for making sure that we know about all the tools that we can use to get through this. Other comments, Mr. Barley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tom sort of stole some of my thunder there, but the, the thing that I hope we do in preparing for the, the future of what's happening here. Is that we prepare for the worst and hope for the best. With the financial aspects of, of running and operating this county. I think that. The, what Tom had mentioned there, and, and I'm certainly a fan of when it comes to the budget. We can pass the budget. And we can appropriate quarterly. And that gives us an opportunity to watch what's happening on a much closer basis. And we can. On a monthly basis, analyze what's happening and keep up with it. And would apply, you know, the same, same thing, I guess, in terms of how we operate with the school board, which I believe is what Mr. Cox was talking about earlier. But I think that, that we need to be very careful with the funding and how we proceed forward. And be as sure as we can possibly be. When we make these decisions because we really have no room for a mistake.
Thank you, Mr. Barley. Mr. Cox.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. The sobering news, of course, is now we have 22 million people out of work in the U.S. The president made it. A presentation this evening about going back to work. He's talking about weeks, which kind of matches what the governors are saying. So it gets, it stays murky. It's not going to get any clearer. And as Mr. Barley said, the concern really is 2021. And we could very well see a 20% reduction in our revenues. That's not a prediction. That's just, that could happen. And so as I told Dr. Jones, my concerns were in three areas. One, reducing spending as much as we can. Two, creating as big a cash hoard as we can accumulate. So that we have some flexibility and periodic reviews, whether those are quarterly or monthly. Times are going to change very, very fast. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Mr. Novak.
I just had one thing. My dog is here. He wanted to say hi. And wanted to remind, wanted to remind everybody to wear these. So when you're out and about, they're recommending to have a mask on and they're finding that this thing can be airborne now for several minutes. So it's a good idea to protect yourself. Just thought I'd remind you.
Could we, could we give your dog a square?
Excuse me, Mr. Novak, we need to know when you're going to be there and when your dog is going to be there. Yes, Mrs. Carmack.
I did want to commend on a softer note, the library, they have done an exceptional job putting out resources on the county website. As well as reaching out to patrons and providing lists of services for seniors. So they've done a very, very good job. You should check it out.
Thank you, Mrs. Carmack. Brett, Sharla, board members, I'm going to recommend as part of this budget. That we begin with the creation of a revenue stabilization fund. Not unlike what they have in Gitchlin, not unlike what the state of Virginia has. Gitchlin is approximately 3% of their budget. I think this is a tool that we would have liked to have had going into this budget. We don't, but. We can still learn and we can still build that stabilization fund with an eye towards this budget. We might not be able to put in the amount of money this year, but that's something that needs to be done. Secondly, I'm going to ask Brett, I'm, I think he's probably already doing this, but to have the monthly meetings with Sharla, the Finance Director. With our constitutional officers, Mr. Timberlake, our treasurer, to monitor, you know, our revenues, expenditures as we go through each month. These are extraordinary times. And then keep us informed so that if we choose to go to quarterly appropriations or whatever method we go forward with in the budget. We will be able to have the information and the flexibility to be able to make the adjustments as we go through the fiscal year. And I just want to echo the comments of my board members. It's about having an unknown amount of money available during a pandemic. And then we haven't seen anything like this since 1918. So we're truly in unknown territory. You hear the same refrain coming out from the governor. From our members in the General Assembly and from the other jurisdictions in our region. Thank you. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting.